Okay, good evening, everyone. Want to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, meeting of the Douglas Board of Selectmen. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She doesn't know that yet.
Again, good evening, everyone. For chairman's announcements, I think I have two. One is, in about an hour, the Douglas High School Girls' Varsity Basketball Team will be representing the small towns or in the championship in the small-town Clark Tournament, which is iconic in central Mass. And we should hear how they do by the end of today's meeting. So we certainly wish them luck in watching the girls' sports in town really make an impact. The other is, on March 2nd, I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that the first regional or local screening of the movie Ephes, which was filmed at Soldiers Field, will be shown at 7:00 PM at WCVW Front Room Theaters on 910 Main Street. If anyone's interested in buying tickets for that, I'm sure you can. Just look them up online. And I know some people in town are excited to see it on the big screen.
Cool. Let's start.
Yeah, come on in.
Oh, I need him to be over here.
Oh, oh, oh.
If I haven't made another announcement.
Yeah.
May 3rd and the common will be the first annual Douglas Hummingbird Festival. So with all the ice and snow around, that might be a welcome break to think about. They're still working on the program for it, but.
The Hummingbird Festival. Can we filibuster a little bit while we get Les back? What is a Hummingbird Festival?
Well, there's going to be contests and poetry contests and some singing and there'll be some arts and crafts and selling some bird feeders and things like that. Still shaping up.
Excellent. They are very social birds.
Yeah.
You just enjoy them in the neighborhood. Ch-ch-ch. Can I open a public hearing, knowing a member isn't exactly here? I can do that? All right, so let's move right along. Poll petition on Perry Street. I'd like to open the public hearing for this matter. Are you representing National Grid?
No, I'm 42 Perry Street.
Oh, very good. All right.
He's not on yet. Al Galvin is supposed to be there.
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, there he is.
Okay, great. Yes, we can, sir.
What?
So we called the.
Thank you.
We called the public hearing to order. I suppose I should probably let the audience and people in the crowd know at home what it is we're looking to do, but it's in our packets. It's number 31042247, where we're looking to install one JO poll on Perry Street, install a new poll, 10-50 in line existing polls 10 and 11. Poll will be installed on the left side of the driveway to service a new house located at 42 Perry Street, Douglas, Mass. With that as the framework, what can you tell us about this poll petition?
Yeah, so it's a new residence set a few hundred feet back off the road. So just because of where the existing polls are on the street, we needed a takeoff pole to bring the cables towards their home, closer to their home. So that intermediate pole, 10-50, was decided to be put there on the left side of the driveway so they could follow it right up along the path of four or five poles. I think it's four poles deep. And then hit them up a shorter service drop there, you know, to get proper voltage stability, things like that. So really, this is just a takeoff pole from the cable lines off the street feeding back into a property deep off the road.
Anything else before I?
It's in line with the existing pole line that's out there. It's obviously very rural. There's no effects on traffic or sidewalks or anything like that. It's a very wooded area that I'm sure everyone's aware of. So it's pretty straightforward, really.
Okay. So, sir, you're here for a reason.
I was just hoping to know installation time, how long it might take them to actually put it in place and potentially when it might start. Because I've been waiting for about two months. I've had to pause the whole build where we need power to it. We have all our electrical in place and everything in place. Now, we can't do anything else because we don't want to damage potential wood floors and things like that. So in order to get contractors on a good timeline, it'd be nice to get some sort of timeline to me. And I'm struggling to get that with my project manager at National Grid. So I was hoping tonight might bring some clarity to that.
Maybe that could, just for the record, your name and address.
Oh, sure. Nicholas Meadows. Live in Whitensville currently, but potential address is 42 Perry Street in Douglas.
Very good. Thank you. How about that? Estimated time of work?
Yeah. No, I mean, unfortunately, you know, when we attend these hearings, we don't get scheduling updates. That's really between the electrician or the contractor that the customer hires and the job owner back at the National Grid office that sets up the requests. If there's something holding out, whether it's certain paperwork or billing issues or things of that, there's certain process where as things get, the boxes get checked off, it gets sent to scheduling finally. The last step usually being the inspection from the town of the electrician's work at the house, you know, the meter socket, things of that nature. So once that's called in, it usually gets bumped to the scheduling coordinator. I don't know where that stands in the system. But if you, you know, if you speak to your electrician or contractor, whoever's in touch with us, they can give the job owner a call and see what the status is, see if it's on the books yet. I know the crews lately have been inundated with a lot of work due to the winter and storm duty and things of that nature, so that could have delayed it in some regard. I appreciate it.
Okay.
I'm up to date on all my stuff, so we're already paying for it. So we're ready for it.
The town would appreciate you could do anything possible to help a new resident. So if you can put a fire under the powers that be, it would be appreciated.
Yeah, definitely. I'll run it by the designer, the gentleman on my team that did the design and worked with the electrician, Mr. Fraser. I can certainly run it by him and he can certainly look into what the status is currently. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else regarding this poll petition? Seeing as none, I'll make or entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm going to sneak out of here in a second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Hal to close, seconded by Ross. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now for the actual action.
Move approval of the poll permit.
Motion's been made by Hal.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ross. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye. Four oh unanimous. So, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Right at the 7:10 mark, we'll run a good show. St. Dennis Church would like to come before us to ask permission to enjoy some of God's great creations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're looking for a one-day malt and beer, malt and wine license. malt and beer are the same thing, right?
Sir, let me just interrupt you real quick to say that at 7:10, we called the public hearing to order. Go ahead.
So, my name's Tom, Thomas Dakota, 131 Manchok Street. I'm on the committee at St. Dennis Church. We've had, this is our annual St. Patrick's Day event. I think this is either the third or fourth year that we've had it. It's been pretty well attended. We have some Irish dancers come in from a dance school, and this year, we actually got a parishioner who has an Irish band that's going to play, and so we'll be just serving beer and wine. And we always limit it to no more than two of each to any one person.
Yeah, that's good. Were there any questions from the board, the audience? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
I'll second the motion.
Made by Ross, seconded by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now for the motion.
Make a motion to approve the special one-day liquor license for wine and malt for St. Patrick's Day event.
Thank you, Ross.
Second.
Seconded by Hal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great day.
And now, we will move on to the joint meeting with the MS4 Stakeholder Committee. I saw Mike pop in last year here.
Yep, Carol.
Carol, if you guys would like to make your way up to the table here, we'll have a little discussion on what you guys worked so diligently on. And you guys were in the other room, called the order. Everything's on the up and up. The cable folks have this under control. And so this issue's lingered for some time. I remember in 2010, this was a hot button issue, and it went away for a little bit.
And again, in 2018, this almost hit the town meeting floor, but it was, I think, squashed before it hit there.
Yep.
And then again, last spring, same thing. So we got hit with administrative order, excuse me, Matthew Buonoy, Director of Community Development, Town of Douglas. We got hit with administrative order in either August or September of this past year that we needed to get this in place by May 31st. We needed a bylaw. So we created a charge to form this committee, the task of creating a bylaw by the end of January, which they did, which they produced. If you want, I can go over some of the last-minute adjustments that we just reviewed. You should have a draft in front of you. There's also a new map, which was updated recently, because there was a label in the map. Oh, sorry. I just want to go over the timeline a little bit of how we got here. You guys should have the EPA-regulated map in your packets. That's what the EPA mandates as what we're supposed to, what we're supposed to adopt. But, oh, I should introduce also our stormwater consultant, Nick Christoforo from CEI is also on the call. He talked a little bit about the procedure for kind of, so what we did is, we had the EPA map, and his team was able to shrink it down to the catchment areas here, shown in the red area on the 11-by-17 map. We took the old bylaw and we threw it out. We started from scratch with the town of Oxbridge's bylaw, and we catered it to ours. And we've worked out a final draft that's ready for you guys to hopefully support and schedule a public hearing in time for town meeting in spring. Couple of last-minute changes for the date of the map. On page one, purpose A, the date of the map reads December 2024. That needs to be changed to February 2025 to reflect this map. The change on the map was there were two areas.
This is that. That's what we're going to be pointing to?
Correct.
Yes.
So the map had gray and white areas, and the white areas were not labeled. But the white areas reflected the original EPA coverage.
Oh, line.
So what we did is, those white areas are removed just to call those the non-regulated area, and the red is now the regulated stormwater area. That's all that fits under the jurisdiction of this bylaw are the red, the pink. That's this map guy. This one, yeah. Yeah, you got it. So, so on, that's on page one. Then on page six, right on the top, applicability A, second sentence reads the date of the map again, needs to be updated to February 2025. And then on that same page, under section B exemptions, number six, depending on which version of the bylaw you have, it used to read construction of a single family, family dwelling. It said family twice. I just removed that, and so that's no longer there. Those are the only edits that we've produced since the meeting held its last meeting in
So, a question I had, and so I watched the vast majority, if not all, of your meetings. And I watch a lot. I watch conservation, and they seem to come in at the 11th hour and want to participate. But this firmly says Planning Board is the leading authority, we'll call it.
Correct.
On the matter. Has that issue slowed down? Is that, everyone in agreement?
The commission talked about it at their last meeting. They'll meet again on March 3rd.
Okay.
They may make a recommendation otherwise, but it's really the selectmen's call.
We worked very hard on this. Put a lot of hours in. We're lucky we had Margaret, who's a professional engineer, volunteering, and we had some good people on there. And my only thing is that, you know, now this committee is going to be disbanded. But rules and regulations have to be made. And the fact that we've worked on it so long, we know what, upside down, backwards and forward, I think that the committee should continue to do the rules and regulations. But I don't know how we feel about that.
Well, it makes sense if there's some housekeeping things to do like that, to keep you in existence.
Right.
As long as the process is still going on.
So procedurally, I think that our charge was limited to just the bylaw. If the select board wanted to create a new charge, or this was a subcommittee of the Planning Board, since it's going to be the Planning Board's regulations, I think the Planning Board should create the subcommittee. They can ask the same members to join that subcommittee. But I think it'd be the responsibility of the Planning Board to do that at this point. Because it'd be their regulations to govern the bylaw.
I think that's a fair assessment, just because the authority of the bylaw is the Planning Board, from that standpoint. But again, this stakeholder committee is made up of members of multiple boards, their involvement. It was put out to conservation as well, to participate in the drafting of the bylaw as well. But we were fortunate to have a lot of members from the community, finance as well, and zoning board, and planning board, and water sewer, and even Adam Furno, great insight into this. And again, the community's been waiting 15 years to get this in place, and we've got a letter to take action from the Fed. So I think it's an undertaking. We went from last May of a townwide map, and, you know, the communities that have adopted a townwide map are suffering in a lot of unnecessary filings and permits and fees associated with not even having a stormwater drain in front of their property or in the street. So this bylaw really focused on the areas that are of importance, that would actually drain into a river, stream, well, it was the terminology, the body of water.
Waterways of the.
Waterways of the U.S. and stuff like that. So, and we had quite a few key votes back and forth, and there wasn't times when we were very split on wording and decisions and language and everything else. But at the end of the day, I think what's gone before, so it'd be very beneficial to the community, and focus on exactly the meeting the minimum task of the bylaw. And we're just put together for.
So on the subcommittee, I think that's a fine idea, to want to get this through town meeting. Maybe at that point, ask planning to pursue that. Mike, you're pleased with it?
Sure. Mike Zucker, Planning Board and Stakeholders Committee. Planning Board, we talked about it at our last meeting. It was unanimous thumbs up on what we have before us.
I'll have a letter of support for your public hearing from the Planning Board.
Yeah, so.
Margaret, you've been busy. You said yes to the town, and I see you all over the place.
I'm kind of semi-retired, so I have a little more time to do this. I kind of enjoy it, actually.
And the insight was, you know, clearly you're up to speed very, very quickly. Any thoughts on this particular piece? I don't know if you've watched the debate over the years regarding this.
Well, not to pat ourselves on the back, but I thought we did a pretty good job considering, you know, we had to meet this mandate from the EPA. And then we also looked at, like Les said, a lot of other towns' stormwater plans, and we kind of learned from the mistakes of theirs, you know. They made them, they're a little too comprehensive. So we tried to meet the minimum requirements of the EPA, and then also not to create hardships for, you know, people of the town. So I think we accomplished that.
Good.
To the chair, I'll just, I'm going to throw one more thing in there. The question's been brought up between council and stuff like that on why are we putting a date on the map? Main reason that we've all agreed to put a date on the map is to change the map has to go before the residents of Douglas. That way, there no one board or committee can take this map and all of a sudden, with a stroke of a pen, just change it. It's a protection, I think, for all the residents, for all the work. We're trying to make this pass and keep it as minimal as possible, and the best way for security on that is to keep a date on the map. Now, will it ever be changed? Who knows? It might not. You know, it could stay there forever. But it's one security that we can all have for the residents of the town.
Yeah. So, and our consultant, Mr. Christoforo.
Mr. Christoforo.
How are you, sir? Do you have anything you'd like to add before we vote to accept this as part of the warrant?
So there were three things, and two of them really have already been touched on. The first one being the refining of the map down to really the absolute minimum, smallest area that we can legally get away with regulating within the town of Douglas. Because, you know, I don't know if you probably do remember, but we started off looking at, well, do we do it townwide? Do we do it just within the urbanized area? Or do we really refine it down as small as we could? And we ended up going that latter route of going down to as small as we possibly can make this thing. So just, you know, just so everyone is aware, I think that was, it sounds like it was a good decision. I'm optimistic that it will help it go before town meeting and be successful. Hopefully, that is the case. The second thing is the need for regulations that, yes, this unfortunately is not done. We will need to do regulations which tend to be, they tend to be a little bit more, they're longer than a bylaw, there's more to them. But they tend to be a little bit more prescriptive, I guess, and kind of, there's things you have to meet, and as long as you're meeting those things, that, you know, it should be a little bit easier, rather than the bylaw, which can be a little bit more challenging. The third thing is, I just wanted to thank this committee here for your work on this, because, I mean, this really truly is a thankless job, and the fact that you were willing to take this on and volunteer your time, I want to thank you because you've made my life easier amongst other things. But, you know, really, I work with a lot of towns on this, and there are very, very few towns that have gone this route. So, thank you.
All right. That's great. Hearing that, I think there might be a new importance on that subcommittee. You know, in legislating, there's a phrase, you write the law, I'll write the regulation. I would like nothing more than this body to be the entity to write that regulation. So to the extent that you need our input for that, Mike and Margaret, you know, you've got it. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I might make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That if you take a vote tonight, it would be simply to accept the report of the subcommittee. You have other boards that are going to hear this and have a conversation with you about it, rather than short-circuit their processing. You're accepting the report, you're saying it's credible and substantial, and in the absence of any credible objection, this is what will go forward, but you're still giving your couple of the boards a chance to weigh in. Since you appoint them, it's courtesy to them.
Makes good sense. Do we, we'll leave it at that.
Look, this ConCon is meeting when?
March 30th. March 30th. Yeah, there was one that was coming in late.
And BFCC, I think, is going to just have a general conversation about it tomorrow.
And I'll raise a question. We're not going to dissolve this committee because I would imagine an unfavorable vote in the annual town meeting will require us to go back to the drawing board and perhaps resubmit, so we won't even take action there. But I would entertain a motion to accept the stormwater bylaw as a report for future placement on the town meeting warrant. Made by Ross?
Second.
Seconded by Les. Les worked a little harder on that than you did, Hal. All those in favor?
Story of my life.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, thank you again.
Great. Thank you.
We just, thank you.
Public hearing will be next. We can attend that if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you. At least a couple.
Good evening, guys.
Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Excuse me. Moving on, Matt, we're going to talk RFP for property and casualty insurance with possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'm not going to go through my entire memo here. It's part of the record. The basic concept is twofold. One is, this is a relationship we should revisit every few years anyway. It keeps everyone honest. It forces a conversation about coverages and deductibles and affordability of all of the products that we buy. The second is, I've been approached by several brokers that have mentioned that in their review of municipalities in Massachusetts, Douglas appears to be overpaying for its coverage. And I've heard this from a number of different directions now, which, to me, is signaling that the industry is seeing an unnecessary expense here. I have to say that, doing my own quick math, based on the data that we have from Maya, over the last 10 years, we've paid premiums of just, I'm going to round up, 2.5, 3.5 million, and we've had claims of about 2.8 million. So loss ratio right around 79%. And for the last five years, that ratio falls all the way to 45%. There's been an emphasis in our conversations with Maya on a loss that we had due to a fuel spill and an issue at the schools, which is going to roll out of the analysis this year. What they didn't emphasize in their conversation with us is that the year after we had the fuel spill was COVID. So municipal operations came almost to a grinding halt. The year of COVID, we had $33,000 worth of claims. We paid way over $300,000 in premium. So our loss ratio for the year after the big spill was very, very low. The following year, it doubled to a whopping 66,000. We've been doing very aggressive risk management as a town government to reduce the opportunity for these events to occur. We've installed building sensors. We have a whole new routine of monitoring all of our fuel levels, monitoring all of our buildings. So there's the sensor part, then there's the human interaction. So Adam spends a lot of time, the wee hours of the morning or on the weekends, checking up on our stuff. And we also, because we've had some losses at the schools, have been interacting more regularly with the facility staff at the schools, which I think has gone a long way towards minimizing events on their side. So frankly, if you look at those loss ratios, even if I'm being overly simplistic in my math, I don't know that it matters much. There's plenty of degrees of freedom here, but certainly not paying a reasonable amount right now for premiums. So I want to turn it over to Tony Bucci in a second, but before I get there, I will take the blame for this. At the last meeting, I wasn't terribly articulate in explaining the process. Property and casualty insurers do not respond directly to bid, you know, request for proposals, bid documents. They place their business through what, on their side, they call producers. On our side, we call brokers. And the last time we went through this process, we had Maya represented by Cabot Risk as basically, as the incumbent was more or less an automatic finalist, which I wouldn't suggest changing that process. You have to respect the incumbent for all the work they've done with us and give them the opportunity to make a final presentation. But the other broker we had last time was A.J. Gallagher. And when you go back through the minutes of those meetings, you'll see Gallagher approached many, many insurance companies across all the lines that we carry and arrived at the best package that they felt they could put together for us. at the best package that they felt they could put together for us. I think the difference this time is that, in the last round, the net savings to the town were about $14,000 a year, and here, I think, we're looking at six digits. And the budget year that we're facing, in terms of pressure on the education side of our budget, we need to be very thoughtful about how much we're spending here, because premiums have almost doubled in six or seven years. So, I'll shut up now. I basically, I have, over the years, forged relationships with people in different professions that I can trust and that I rely upon for advice on really complicated issues. Because I don't expect myself, I don't expect this board to be experts in all these different lines of insurance. But what I do want to be able to do is go with someone that I know and trust, rather than someone I've just meeting for the first time. It may make a great presentation with the glossies, but what I'm interested in is proven results, someone I've worked with and have the foundation of trust and good dialogue. Mr. Bucci and I have worked together in my prior employment in Rhode Island, and we saved a community over a million and a half dollars a year on health insurance, on the health insurance side, by migrating folks that were on active plans over to Medicare-based plans and making a number of other decisions. And what I was able to observe throughout that entire process was that Mr. Bucci actually cares about his work and cares about municipalities and our financial constraints. But he also did a lot of one-on-one meetings with retirees who saw big changes coming to their plans and needed that constituent outreach and an understanding person, a compassionate voice, to help people understand that actually, we were getting them a better plan than the one they had, for a lot less money, for the town and for them. And in the end, it was a really good result. So, I would like to be able to work with Mr. Bucci, but I also want to give you the opportunity to, to meet him, hear his presentation about what he offers as a broker, and sort of, if we can all come to a consensus on what we want to do next, after that. That was your cue, Tony.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Matt, and thank you, board, for, for having me tonight. I feel very glad to have an opportunity to talk to you about this. Again, my name is Tony Bucci. I'm a unit leader with World Insurance. Our office, the office that I work out of, is in West Water, Rhode Island. We have 160 offices across the United States. We have many offices, we have many more offices in Massachusetts, including Boston, Waltham, Brockton, and Attleboro. We insure about 200 municipalities and government entities across the United States. In Massachusetts, we insure the city of Taunton, Lakeville, and Middleborough currently. And I'm currently working with another municipality not far from, within 20 miles of Douglas, so I have a pretty good read on the area. I've been in the property and casualty business for 40 years and have lots of experience with working on budgets, insurance budgets, risk control, loss ratios, and claim mitigation. One of the things that I, my, I'm advocating that you put this RFP out for a broker, as Matt said very articulately, that it's not insurance companies that you're, you're RFPing, it's a broker that would go out to the market, find the right company, or find a, could be a combination of companies, put a proposal together, to put it in front of you, for you to make a decision on and to review it. One of the things that struck me in my conversation, just use kind of cursory, basic conversations with Matt about the cost and what you're currently budgeting for property casualty insurance, I compare that to the town that I'm working with now, and I typically like to compare populations. So the population of the town that I'm working with now in Massachusetts, roughly the same, probably within 100, 200 people in population. Their insurance budget that they budgeted for this past year is about $200,000 less than what you have budgeted right now. And the, the work that I've done so far for this town, it looks like I'm gonna be able to reduce that by about another $150,000. So, that led me to the, the idea that, you know, this number that you're paying right now seems to be too high. The, this other town is also with Maya, so a similar situation that way. One of the things that, in my experience working with towns, that I think is very, very important, is reviewing the values of the property. That tends to get buried over a period of time. I looked at yours right now, you, you insured about $110, $109 million worth of value. So that, that would be something that I would want to review to make sure that it's in line and accurate. Property carries a pretty high rate in terms of cost. The other area that tends to get overlooked, and this is, again, I haven't gone too deeply yet with Douglas, but it's the cyber liability exposures and what can be done there. I've recently worked on a number of government entities in Rhode Island, actually, that had some issues and concerns with cyber liability that we were, most, we were able to take care of. And you might be aware of the, the big breach that, that occurred in Rhode Island with cyber liability, that it, it ended up, I think, costing Deloitte a few million dollars, many millions of dollars to resolve that issue. But anyway, that's, that's another area that I think is very important, and just the whole idea of review. So what I would suggest is that, if I were to come in, if I was chosen as the broker to come in, that I would do, actually, a complete survey. So I would come in with a team of a few people from the insurance company, we would survey the town to review the exposures, and we would give you a report. You'd have that report. That would be part of what we would use to put the insurance proposal together, and at, at that point, that would be helpful in, in kind of putting all these pieces together. But I, I think that it would be, it would be well worth it. I agree with Matt that this is something that needs to be revisited from time to time. You can pick your cadence in terms of how often to do it, but I highly suggest doing it, because it's, it's just, I think, good practice, really good practice. So, that's generally what I, I wanted to share with the board, and I'm certainly willing to take any questions, any thoughts, any, anything that I can help answer for you. But again, I would, I would highly suggest or recommend putting this out for an RFP for a broker, again, a broker, not an insurance company. The brokers will go out to the market and, and put something together, put a proposal together for you. But I think it would be well worth your time, well worth the city's effort to, to do this. So if there are any questions, I'd be more than glad to take any questions.
So, Mr. Chairman, Tony's being modest, I'm jump-starting this. So, the selection of an insurance broker in this sector is exempt from Chapter 30B procurement requirements. We don't have a lot of time. I'm not looking to put this in place for Fiscal 27. I'm looking to put this in place for Fiscal 26, which means we have to give Maya 60 days of notice if we intend to leave them. So that, back that up from July 1, that backs up to May 1. So we would need to make a decision by May 1. Now, the reason why I'm optimistic that we can pull that timeframe off is because these people know their business. Maya's gonna make their presentation to us based upon their lengthy experience. I don't know how much that's gonna change with the passage of time. And I think Mr. Bucci's equipped to get us to a finalist on his side. One of the things that was important to me is that in our last process, Gallagher did not have a relationship with Chubb, and it made it very uncomfortable for us, because we have very important coverage called injured on duty coverage for our public safety first responders. And it's not the kind of policy we like to change much, if we can help it. And we don't like to have so-called elimination periods where we're bearing all the risk of the cost of an injury for X amount of days before the insurance pays. And that was the deal breaker, the last time we had this conversation, that the company that Gallagher recommended replacing Chubb with was VFIS, had a very lengthy, I believe it was a 30-day elimination period. So the town would have been on the hook for a full month for the cost of IOD, and before anything got adjudicated in the claim and they started paying. We don't have that kind of budget flexibility. We're a town, not a city. We don't have access to reserves. We can't make transfers from other accounts. We're very rigid in Massachusetts about the way our accounts are structured. So, Tony's thinking we're gonna go out and try to have a competition amongst brokers. I'm asking you to trust me on the pick, and that we would go to the next step of the process, which would be to hear from Maya, as the board has said it wants to do, while Tony's doing his work marketing the business. And we could move to a finalist sometime in April and make a decision on it.
In, in the RFP, would you have a certain rating requirement on the carriers?
That's a question for Tony.
Yes, it's gotta be A+. It has to be A+. The rating needs to be the top rating. Even, even the rate, excuse, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt. But the, even the ratings of A, believe it or not, have grades, it's degrees, rather. So, but I would absolutely make sure that there could be an A-plus rated company.
Go ahead, Les.
Just through the chair, just a few items, questions. Is there any opportunities of pooling with other communities of a co-op or some type of joint insurance policy? Again, uncharted territory or something, definitely maybe not for this time, because we've got limited runway, but something considered. But we also made the investment in the school security cameras, and which should drive down our costs. Again, prevents a lot of things, as well as, you know, there's the cyber training that's offered through BBT and other schools, so that should drive down costs and premiums. Appreciate, Matt, you bringing this forward for us and kind of reoccurring. I don't have a problem if we want to send personally, send a letter that we're leaving, and then we can always re-join them up if they win the bid. Just my thoughts on, on Maya. I mean, there's a significant savings here, that, that's gonna be a huge benefit to the town if we can, so it's worthwhile to investigate and be thorough through there.
When it comes to how aggressive we've been with risk management, we are extremely aggressive with cybersecurity. So, our IT consultants are constantly answering the state because we win these grants for preparedness. So we are following the checklist for establishing, I don't wanna call it state-of-the-art, municipalities don't do state-of-the-art. What we do is proven technologies, and we invest in them to the degree necessary, whether it's versioning or, you know, really sophisticated firewalls that we use, the security around our website and our email addresses is .gov level, not .com level or .org level. So we've been ratcheting up, we've had a cybersecurity assessment done by a student-led team out of MIT, that gave us a nice report, that was fairly, nice checklist of things that we could go through, that insurance carriers are looking for. We also have an accredited police department. One of our lines is police coverage. We have one of the finest police departments, we believe, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and Maya has never given us a break for that. But all that training, all those regulations that they write, all the protocols, SOPs, and not only writing the stuff down, but actually executing faithfully against those rules, stands in our corner. It's a reason for us, we do not present the same level of risk than an unaccredited department that's busier does to the group. When it comes to-
Excuse me, Matt, can I, can I comment on that?
Sure.
Matt?
Yep.
I was just gonna say, I, that does make a big difference. A lot of cities and towns that I see, that I talk to, don't go to those lengths in, in terms of making sure things are tight with SOPs and the, the way that they put things together, the way that they're organized. And when it comes to risk mitigation, it's, it's, a lot of times, it's an afterthought. It's not something that's focused. So, you, you mentioned that you're the police department, and maybe there's, there's other departments within the municipality, but it does make a big difference to insurance companies, and, and you really should get, get credit for it. And when it comes to paying a premium, I, I'm sorry, I just thought I'd, I wanted to comment on that.
So the one question that, Mr. Chairman, that Selectman Stevens asked that I didn't answer there was, what are the possibilities of banding together to form a group? I think that's too early. You know, Maya isn't a bad concept. It really isn't. And, you know, they, they treat people, as long as you don't pose a risk to them, it's just routine, right? And for the longest time in Douglas, you can see the premiums hardly moved over the course of eight years. It's when you start filing claims that you start to see a different side of how the organization runs, and you almost feel like you're self-insured, right? That they're really, the only thing you're getting from Maya, and I'm being, our agent's probably gonna, from Cabot's, probably gonna bite my head off for saying it, but I'm gonna say it anyways, I think it's the truth. It's basically a payment mechanism to pay back your own claims, spread out over the course of two or three years to soften the blow financially. But the idea of pooling risk is not what they do. It's just not. You're, you're basically paying off your own stuff. And in some cases, they're carrying paper to insure against the risk. They collect the claim, and they don't give you the benefit of writing down your paid claims by that amount. And you can see it. With the, with the fuel leak, we had a $250,000 policy on the mechanicals that failed in our boiler room downstairs, and Maya collected that. They collected that 250, so they paid us 500, but they really only paid us 250 out of their trust fund. So I, I think there's, there's a level of sophistication required to pull a lot of municipalities together for PNC, that I don't know that five or six would, would do it this time.
Yeah, and it might be not enough runway, I mean, for what we're doing, but definitely worth all the-
It could be something done on a longer-term basis, and look at that.
There's an entire statue dedicated to this in Massachusetts.
Matt, can I comment on that as well?
Sure.
You okay?
Yep.
So, I, I agree, I think that it makes, you know, it's a good idea in terms to at least review these things, but I think towns like Sturbridge, there's a lot of towns in this, in that same kind of population, that ask me the same question, and individually, obviously, it's too small, but to pool, there's a lot of risk, there's a lot of shared risk. And because you don't have the same control that you have in your own town, you're actually taking on risk for some of these other communities, as good as that, that they may be at that particular time. My suggestion would be, is to work with a much higher deductible. This is what, in, in terms of a town the size of Douglas, I think maybe going to, even, I don't, I don't know if, if $25,000 or $50,000 makes sense, but in some towns, I'm going as high as $125,000 or $250,000. This is bringing down the premium, and you could create a fund. So you, you kind of work, as Matt says, you can use the deductible, or the savings from the deductible, you know, to, to provide a buffer for the, for the times that you need to pay it, as opposed to getting involved with other municipalities and trying to share that risk with them. I think you're gonna find that other municipalities do things, they're different. Every municipality is different, and they, they do things differently. And that's where sharing the risk gets to be tricky. So I just, thank you for letting me share that.
So if I may, I know Tony had mentioned commenting and doing a survey on a town. I'm assuming he's gonna survey our properties, review our, our claims, so I'm thinking that the, the security system at the schools is gonna come into play, our, obviously, our police department will come into play, the HB, the new roofs and HVAC systems will all come into play in his survey and review, as far as rates are-
Exactly. All, all the properties, I, I think all the values on every building needs to be reviewed to make sure that they're accurate. Would want to take a look at the deductibles associated with those buildings, the age of the systems, including the, the heating systems, the security systems, what, which buildings may have sprinkler systems. So all, all those things would be reviewed, including, then the automobiles, all, everything that's on the automobile schedule, we'd want to take a look at to see, you know, does it make sense to, to put full coverage on certain vehicles? Or maybe the deductible needs to be increased, increased on certain vehicles. What do you have on the inland marine schedule? Are there things that should be, that should be there that are not there? Or there, there are things that have been there for years and just have kind of languished, need to come off. But I, I think that the risk assessment will go into all those areas, including what loss control measures that you've taken up to this point. control measures that you've taken up to this point.
Tony, you think after, excuse me, a visit here, that's enough to put together a serious proposal?
Yes, I do. There's a survey form that I started with. Once I fill out that, I'm going to need Matt's help to complete the survey form. I get that to the insurance company and I'll be able to schedule a survey to come out and I'll be with them, of course, and anybody, whoever Matt designates at the town or himself to do the survey. So, and then at that point, they'll have everything they need. They'll be able to turn this around pretty quickly. And one of the reasons why I think we're here today in the middle of February is to get ahead of these deadlines that we have to deal with, the Maya deadlines. And also I try to get out early in terms of budget. I started working on, the town that I'm working with now in Massachusetts, I started in November to put some things together. So it doesn't hurt to start early.
So I think the question before the board is, do we authorize Matt to move forward with Tony in the hopes that possibly we inject some competition into the mix, keeping Maya abreast all along? And at the end of it, we should have an opportunity to compare apples to apples?
I would move that we appoint Mr. Bucci to be our broker consultant.
Or are we authorizing Matt?
Yeah. Either way, you're authorized. I'm your chief procurement officer, so really you're asking.
Authorize the town administrator to sign up the.
The guy.
Advertise the.
All right, I'll accept that amended motion and second of I less.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, Tony, get to work.
Yep.
Thank you, guys. Have a good rest of the meeting. Thank you.
So I think that's a good.
Yeah, smart thing to shop around.
Apologize school folks, probably should have called you earlier so you could get it home, but come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. How's everyone tonight?
Very good, thank you.
So thank you for having us tonight and I will fill you in a little bit about the MSBA program and the statement of interest. A few weeks ago, Courtney and I attended a webinar put on by the Massachusetts School Building Authority regarding submitting a statement of interest for the accelerated repair program. The MSBA has allocated $300 million over a two-year period to fund roofs, windows and doors in school buildings. We have to submit an application. The application's about three pages long, but we cannot submit the application to even be considered to enter the program without approval of both the Board of Selectment and the school committee. As you know, the primary school, which is what we'd be looking at, is 46 years old. The roof, the windows qualify us to be able to apply. The roof has to be a certain age, the windows have to be a certain age and the doors need to be a certain age. So what we're looking for here is just the vote language to allow us to apply to the MSBA and submit the statement of interest to see if they would even consider us for entering the program. The statement of interest is due by March 21st. We would not know until December of '25 if we are accepted into the program. And there's obviously a process to go through for the program. If everything works out, then we would have to come back to the Board of Selectment for a warrant article to go on town meeting floor and then for the citizens to approve the warrant article. So we're probably looking at being three, four years out. There are portions of that roof that are 46 years old, the building's 46 years old, the window's 46 years old. It's not a matter of if we need to replace the windows and the roof, it's a matter of when. And by submitting the statement of interest and if we're accepted into it, it allows for us to have a portion of those costs refunded to us as opposed to funding eventually 100% of the roof and the windows and the doors. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I just want to, one thing is, before, we did do.
We'll go back, yeah.
Three different sections. So the roof that we're looking at is 22 years old. So it's past the minimum number of years that they require to even apply for this, just to show our statement of interest, just an interest of having them even look at all at whether or not we can even proceed in any way with MSBA, so.
Is this through the school building authority?
Correct.
And what percentage likely are we to get out of the program of whatever?
I've seen as low as 10, 20%, as high as 70, don't know where.
Yeah, I don't think we would be at 10.
We would be at 10.
But we can't give you any percent, we have no idea, they don't even know at this point.
But even if they gave us as low as something 10%, it's better to get 10% than 0%.
And again, this is just a statement of interest, there's no, as you saw in the vote language, they even require us to put that in there. We're not bound in any way to proceed with anything at all, but we have no chance of getting anything unless we proceed with something.
Right.
I guess that's the best way to put it.
So would we know before a vote of the town what the deal was with?
Oh, absolutely. So we'd be accepted into the program. We would probably know at that point what the percentage is of the reimbursement.
Yeah.
We'd then have to go out and do a feasibility study to figure out the cost.
Well, they'll dictate the whole process.
And they'll dictate the whole process. So you will be well aware of the cost of it before, in the reimbursement, before we got to that point.
Just like a school project or anything when you do that.
If we're just talking about the primary school, isn't there more than 26 windows in the building?
Well, that's the account that we got.
I'm just.
Windows in the building.
Okay.
Just windows.
There are more, there are probably more than 22 windows, but there are only 22 windows, 26 windows, I'm sorry.
They're within the, oh, within the 20 years.
Okay.
You know what I mean? In other words, we can't put in anything on here at all that isn't beyond a certain age.
Okay. Because I think what, the doors were recently done in last several years, right? So you're not requesting doors.
Right, so it's only a few.
That new portion of the back wouldn't do, it'd be that main, that main envelope.
Yeah, there are only a few doors that need to be done.
Sounds like we have nothing to lose.
Zero.
Exactly, to gain.
So when BBT did the accelerated program, it actually went along pretty quick. This is what they just did.
Yep.
Is it really that long to go through it?
They told us they wouldn't, we're submitting the paperwork now, they told us they wouldn't hear back from us until December of '25. I don't want to put a timeline on politics and bureaucracy, but I would imagine that by, it's going to take a little bit of time, a year or two, for the project to reach fruition.
Do you have the ability to, so if they come back and say, okay, yes, you've, you know, agreed, is there ability to split the bid to?
Oh, I didn't, no, he didn't.
No, he didn't.
No, he didn't. Absolutely not.
No, 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 meaning the window project and the roof project, because there's two different separate projects?
No.
I didn't hear a thing.
I didn't either.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, there's only so much you can afford with the budget.
Love the thinking, right? If you have a question, ask it. We may just overreact.
Are the projects' components dissimilar enough to be broken up? I think probably it's fair to say they could be.
We'll have to wait for the MSBA to say how. Yeah.
But the thing is, as far as the MSBA, this particular program, they structure their programs differently like every few years, depending on funding available and what, and they're looking at all 351 communities, what's more likely, and also they have their own interests too, that they're trying to do statewide.
They're in the process right now of visiting every community and every school in the Commonwealth.
Oh, yeah.
So they came out to Douglas to do a survey.
Yep.
So they came out to Douglas, I believe it was late December, early January, and spent about a day and a half, two days touring the buildings, meeting with the facilities director, meeting with the principals, going inside and outside, just to take a look.
Climbing the roof, she even climbed the roof.
Doing everything. And they're doing that for all schools. So they'll have a good, so whatever we put on paper, they can verify with what their survey states.
Yeah, I believe you guys requested them to come out back then, right?
Excuse me?
You guys requested them to come out? They don't.
No, they did, they did that.
On their own?
The MSBA actually put out an RFP to have this done throughout the entire Commonwealth.
They do it every 10 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
They want an inventory of what their buildings, school buildings look like.
Yeah. And that informs them as well as far as potential needs for funding for reimbursement of schools going forward prospectively as well. If you don't have a benchmark of where you stand with buildings, then you can't even formulate anything going forward. Yeah.
If the town decided to make the improvements ahead of the final grant or whatever, would we lose that ability? You can't start on it until.
Correct.
Yeah, no, they don't, yeah.
With inflation going on.
I know.
I know.
Eat up some of the advantage of the program.
Correct.
But at the same time, there could be incentives down the road, right? To jobs and things like that. You know, spark the economy.
I apologize for the lengthy vote language.
Yeah.
Just take it straight from the MSBA website. Trying to figure out who I'm going to pick to do it, but I'll do it for the interest of taking one for the team. However, I will make a motion as a member here tonight, that on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Board of Selectment of Douglas, Mass., in accordance with the Charter of Bylaws and Ordinances, has voted or will vote to authorize the superintendent to submit the MSBA, the Statement of Interest Form dated March 2025 for the Douglas Primary School located at 17 Gleason Court in Douglas, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the MSBA in the future for the replacement, renovation, modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs in a school facility, specifically 31,000 square feet of roofing, which is 32 years old, 26 windows, which are 46 years old, four exterior doors, which are 46 years old, and one exterior door, which is 22 years old. And I would also hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this SOI, the MSBA in no way guarantees the acceptance of the, or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the MSBA or commits the town of Douglas to filing an application for funding with the MSBA at a time in the future.
Can you repeat that?
No.
I just got one quick question.
Don't ruin it. I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
You'll second that, now have your question.
Okay. Just the years kind of seem off to me. So if the building's 46 years old, you're saying in a letter here that the roof is 32 years.
We have three different roof sections.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, the one that you're targeting.
The one that we're talking about, yeah.
Okay.
The three different roof section.
Okay. So that one's, okay. Just for clarification, because it looks like, you know, we replaced the roof 14 years after it was built and versus the.
No.
Getting the math. So I had to ask the question. Okay.
The underlying theme is that we support this measure.
It should be 22.
So.
It should be 22, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, 22, I'm sorry, that should be 22.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes, thank you, yes.
That's a 22 year old roof.
Yeah.
Okay. Would that minor change and edit?
You know what?
Thank you.
Don't sleep on last.
I just, I just was looking like 14 years.
So I'll amend my long-winded thing to 22 years old.
Yep. Okay, you have a second?
Made by Les, that was already seconded by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Get us a grant.
Yeah, big one.
You know what's sad? It's that 46 years old doesn't sound as old as it used to. Am I dating myself?
I remember you are.
Be very, very, very old to me.
Oh, yeah?
I remember that school was.
You're the first kid in the school.
I never made it, I was one year off for every new school. Seriously. Yeah. Yeah, I was one year ahead.
I did attend that school, I will admit to it.
Yeah. So. Then off to Valley Tech I went. Chris, thank you for staying with us tonight.
Oh, worries. Making sure we're muted.
So this, while you're doing that, this is just a follow-up. Follow-up, continued discussion. On an issue that was brought before us by Selectman Stevens, I don't know, it's got to be eight, nine months ago and is part of this budget deliberation. Appreciate you being here to vet this out further.
All right, so this is mostly the same presentation, it's one small editor at the end. I want to say shortly before the fall town meeting is when we, when we did this the first time, I'll run through it again, refresh everyone's memory about what we're talking about. So, Chapter 59, Section 5C and a half, it allows municipality to add an additional amount to the base exemption amounts for the statutory exemptions. This is the entire law we're talking about, or entire section of the law we're talking about. Well, it's legal words too, no offense. So what I tried to do for the presentation purposes is just break it down phrase by phrase and sort of kind of give an English, English translation from legalese. The first section here, say your town accepts the certification. Pretty much, we have to accept the provisions of this section of the law in order to implement this. I don't know why they mentioned that we have our values certified by the commissioner. Every city in town does or you're not going to tax free. People shall be granted an additional exemption that shall be uniform for all exemptions. All that's saying is that you can't do 25% or on this one, and 30%. It's the same percentage on each. On the right, I've listed the, excuse me, base exemption amounts for each of the exemptions that, for the purposes of Douglas, we have people participating in those clauses for exemptions. One additional one we do have is 22D, but since that eliminates the entire tax bill, we wouldn't be, that wouldn't be qualified for this because they, for a few reasons, they wouldn't, wouldn't work, but you wouldn't pay somebody to have a tax bill. Exemption amount shall not exceed 100% of the exemption for which the taxpayer qualifies. All it means is at the town meeting, if we were to vote at this, we can set a percentage that we want to go up. So on a $1,000 exemption, you know, we could say a 50%, you get an extra $500. So you can choose that percentage from 1 to 100, it could just do not exceed 100%.
Chris, are these real dollars over here on the right-hand column?
They are. So that, if we went back one slide, when you look at the base amounts.
Yep.
On those examples, what I'm saying is, okay, say for whatever reason, chose 50%. I chose that number because that's what I was familiar with when I worked in Oxford. That would be what the additional exemption amount you'd be granting under each clause would be. So 87.50 for 17D, 200 for clause 22, 750 for 22C, 500 for 22E, 218.75 for blind and 500 for the seniors. Like I said, the structure of the article and the town meeting vote could set that percentage to be anywhere from 1% to 100. This is just to show an example. As I said, as determined by the legislative body, so it needs to be accepted at town meeting. And this is fairly simple to implement from the assessor's office, so it happened at the May town meeting, it could be implemented for the start of fiscal year '26. The law does say not later than the beginning of the fiscal year to which the tax relates. That was more important in the fall because you couldn't implement it for '25, which we were still looking at, so, or yeah, for '25.
So I had, I don't want to interrupt you too much, but.
No, no, no.
I had kind of digested this as really just a budget discussion, but this particular exemption or series of exemptions has to go to town meeting before we really can insert a number into a budget. We need to.
I think, and I'll probably be speaking a little bit from the manager now, the money that would fund this would be in the overlay account, which is currently a touch overfunded anyway for other reasons. That the overlay account is the account the board of assessors uses for funding abatements, exemptions and senior work off programs. Relative to the amount of money that we currently have in that account, this would be, I don't want to say insignificant, it's a significant amount of money, but it wouldn't. I don't want to say insignificant, it's a significant amount of money, but it wouldn't be something that we would have to drastically adjust our budget planning to do.
Yeah, and I think, which will help with the members, I mean, what's, you know, and you know this number anyways, the current amount that we give for tax exemption today's...
For the five or six clauses, it's right around $60,000. So at a 50%, you'd be looking at $30,000 additional that would be, become part of the Town of Douglas budget through the, through the overlay account. And I do get into that a little later on in this slide, but I don't mind jumping around. I'm familiar with it enough.
Quick question while it's kind of on the surface. Just say this were to pass at 50%. Would seniors still have the ability to do a work-off program also in conjunction?
Separate law, but the senior work-off program does not preclude you from any other state benefits that you are entitled to. So senior work-off law is really what addresses that. It says that senior work-off has nothing to do with this, other than you wouldn't be able to basically get to a negative tax bill. This doesn't allow you to get below a 10%, but that's, was only realistic back in the 80s. You can't get a tax bill for 10% and live in it safely. So practically, that, that section is, is moved. But yeah, you would still qualify for the senior work-off. And even combining these two, other than Clause 22D, would be the only one that would preclude you from senior work-off, only because that completely eliminates the tax bill, so.
And just to add, you know, I mean, when this was, went into effect was in Reagan's first term, with these numbers, and it really hasn't moved since then from Reagan's term. So, so they consider.
So, so, starting in fiscal '26. Let's see.
I still like them.
The school was almost brand-new.
Yes.
The, so this is, this would be in addition to the base exemption amount. Again, here's net taxes after all exemptions can often be reduced to less than 10% of the gross tax bill. So sort of back to that last question, this included with the senior work-off, you can't get below 10% of your gross tax. So if you have a $1,000 tax bill, can't get below 100. Practically, it's not gonna happen in any habitable structure in town. It's just the math doesn't work out. This is the tricky part for me and for taxpayer understanding, and if I venture to guess this, probably quite a few towns that are just blowing right by this piece of the law, but the current year net taxes cannot be less than the preceding year's net taxes. So it's an interesting wrinkle in the law. It's just saying, after you get your base amount, the amount of your net taxes after we do the local option cannot be less than, than the previous year's net taxes. And I actually have a table to kind of illustrate the mechanics of how that works. But what it, what it means from a practical standpoint is, for the typical taxpayer, it's gonna phase in over a few years before they get to that maximum, you know, if it's 50% longer, if it's 100%, less if it's 25%. But I do have a slide that, that shows the mechanics of how that would work. That is probably where most of the actual work comes in this, for a couple of reasons. We have to calculate everybody's redemption individually. It's not like you can just put it into the system and say they do it. I mean, we do do a spreadsheet, and, you know, it does the math for us, but we build the logic into the spreadsheet that's not in our, our software. And the biggest piece is just explaining it to people. You know, they're, they're gonna see the bright headline, they increased it by 50%, and then they don't get 50%, and they're gonna want to know why. So, you know, it's, it's more time at my counter on the telephone explaining the mechanics of this, so.
And I think, just to help the board as well, the people that are only gonna qualify for this would be, you know, disabled veterans, veterans of need, and, you know, blind and seniors that are low-income.
Correct.
Struggling seniors that want to stay in their homes, so.
Yeah. It's, it's all on us. Last section here, all it means is town paying, paying full share of every, every amount increase. So this is the Town of Douglas, you know, voters saying, we want to support seniors and disabled veterans and blind folks a little more than, than what the statutory law says we have to. So no state reimbursement. Here's the, the table I want to show, so I didn't update the numbers, but, you know, I just took, okay, have a $5,000 tax bill in 2025. 2026, two things happened, goes up 2.5%, and they filed for the exemption. If you look, get my laser pointer here. So because it's the base exemption, this net tax amount can be less than the previous year, because they are entitled to get that $1,000 off by statute. What happens now, we've moved to 2027, tax bill goes up another 2.5%. So now they get a little bit of that local option, but you see where on the net, they've frozen, and again, their net taxes cannot be less than the prior year net taxes. So that runs through until year five, and now they're finding their tax bill goes up a few dollars because they've reached the 50% threshold for, you know, so now they've reached that 1,500, that they've gotten the full 50%. So mechanically, that's how it works, and that's what we kind of explain to taxpayers. And it's that one little clause in, in the law, kind of tucked in the middle, that, that triggers that, that action. Quite frankly, I'd be happier and much easier if it was just 50% and they get the 50%, but you pay me to do math, so it's a little more.
So really, this is a multi-year play for people to...
Well, we'll talk about ways where that's not.
Okay.
If you do a debt exclusion override or something like that, you're probably gonna push everybody up that amount very quickly.
All right.
So, debt exclusion, you have the opportunity possibly on the tail end of, of maybe going back below that max threshold again. It's not likely, but I put it out there just because it is a possibility. Capital exclusion, you'll probably spike and go back down because you're, you're putting that increase all into one year. And abatement, so you file for, for an abatement based on property value, something like that, that could alter the timeline. Yes, pretty much, all things being equal, it should take a couple of years. And, you know, the example I used with somebody with a $1,000 exemption, you get a Clause 17D, $175 exemption, you're probably getting the 50% in, you know, the first year, because yeah, probably two and a half every $1,000 you tax bill, your bill should go up about $25. So the average tax bill is about $4,000. Everybody's bill is going up 100. So you would eat that 87.50, you know, probably in year one. Back to cost taxpayers, 1% would be $600, 100% would be $60,000 roughly. You know, so that would be what would be funded as the overlay account, and we would have to take into consideration, you know, at some point in budgeting, just to make sure that the overlay does stay there in future years. So it's, I mean, it's a big number, it, I wouldn't want it coming out of my salary, but I think spread over the entire tax base, you know, it's not a, a huge, a huge number from that standpoint. This absolutely does not change who qualifies or how they qualify, so the, the qualifications, age, income, asset, level of disability, all those, all stay exactly the same. It's not increasing the pool, it's just increasing the benefit if you do qualify for the program. Again, not eligible for reimbursement from the state. I kind of covered this real quick, a little more work in my office, you know, it takes an automatic process, makes a little more manual, and has a little more explanation out for taxpayers. Something I'm certainly willing to do as the assessor. You know, it's, I did it for 15 years in Oxford. We know how to do it. We know what documentation to prepare for people to, you know, so you can show them in their scenario how it worked and how they come up with the number. Heroes Act was recently done, this is the one change we did. Heroes Act allows you to do it for veterans only and leaves out your elderly and blind. I just, I, if I had to guess, I'd say it's 70, 30, veterans to, you know, veterans exemptions are probably 70% at least of what we have, so you, eliminating those, those small classes, you're not doing much, and it just kind of seems like, why would you only pick half? And half of your exemptions. But I just wanted to make sure that was in there. I know the governor's office had sent all veterans, well, just recently sent all veterans letters about the Heroes Act, so I, you know, a lot of questions in my office, so I just want to make sure if anybody's watching here, what we would be doing would cover what was covered in that letter from, from Governor Haley. And the two questions coming out of this is, what's the exact language on it for the warrant article? I'm sure it's just, you know, town would have voted to accept the provisions of, you know, chapter, section, with an additional funding rate at 20%, or 15%, 20%, 25%, something along those lines.
So, signed in your...
Yeah, exactly. And then what ultimately is, I guess, from the board that would put the warrant on the, on the, I mean, the, put the article on the warrant, what percentage would you choose for that?
See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 59, Section 5C and a half.
5C and a half.
Establish the following percentage is, or spread across the board percent, and take any other action.
So that's what I have. Any, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Les, yep, you good?
I'm, I'm good with it. I, I just want to be upfront, I think it's a thing that we can decide on a percentage, I think Chris has done a homework of 50%. We talked about a higher percent, but I think 50% would be a, you know, a good gesture, you know what I mean, considering the, the economics and inflation and stuff like that could help a number of our veterans and seniors and folks in need. And then this still goes before town meeting for vote, so the citizens can come out and decide, you know, if they want to vote up or down on, on this, you know, it's, it's a slight cost, I think $30,000 over, you know, increase for the tax exemption piece of it, but I don't think that's, you know, with the number of homes and other things being built, it can, it can be pretty well absorbed and not impact us, unless Matt gives me a signal that it's gonna be crippling, but I don't think it is.
Would only be if, if you didn't thump into the hard cap.
Correct.
Yeah.
It would actually be...
Less, it'd be less the first.
Float into that.
You're gonna float into it, and then from there, it's, so it's, it's moderate as, as it goes forward, so.
And it's being borne by the overlay overfunding.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Need a vote tonight, or?
Well, I don't...
Coming up on...
Do we need to put on the...
On the warrant?
Yeah, we put on the warrant?
Well, I don't, absent Mike being here, I don't want to take, you know, too, too much. At the end of the day, this warrant is the board's, so I would certainly support continuing the process and maybe urging Matt to keep that in the back of your mind, and the board itself will take up action when we're all together.
All together.
I, I guess what we need is numbers, right? We need a vehicle for conversation. So if you've worked all out, all of parameters.
It's, I mean, it's 60,000, so it's a percentage of 60,000.
Yeah.
I can update, closer to town meeting, I can probably update what, after the April 1st deadline filing, what we submit for this year, but drastically change it.
We can revisit and then add that percentage in at the time we pick it up and vote on it.
Yeah.
To send it into the warrant. But I think, you know, you know, again, Chris and I have had some offline conversations and stuff like that, and, you know, I mean, I think initially it was, it was higher than 50%, but I think 50% was a good, you know, a good landing point, I'd say.
Yeah, we dip our toe in it.
Yeah.
The reality is, this board's very limited in what it can do to impact, well, I shouldn't say that. There are times when I feel like this board's very limited in what it can do for individuals. This, for the target audience, would be very meaningful, and I think we should really robustly support it, but there's a process. Appreciate you coming out.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Chris.
All right. Moving on to the '26 budget discussion, which maybe we've had a little bit of, but what do you want?
So I, I didn't ask to put this on the agenda, so.
Oh, I might have.
I'm ready to rock and roll any way you want to go with it, but I can give you an update on where I am.
I think that might be why I put that in there.
Okay.
Watched the couple FinCom meetings, and I, I do hear a bell ring that we hadn't heard in a couple of years, so, how are we feeling?
Well, after tonight's conversation, I feel a little better. The chief note is that we heard back from BBT on their assessment for the coming year, and I had a placeholder in the budget for 4.5%, and it's more like 12.5%. So, that's about a $226,000 increase above and beyond what I had, you know, set aside. And so I took my, my nice comfortable budget with a little budgeted surplus at the end, because I know for a fact that Ms. Lovett will show me something in the last week before the budget is due, "Oh, did you think of this?", and it'll cost money. And so I like to have a little bit there.
Gee, come on up.
To defend against...
Come up here.
Genisms. Now that I know she's here. I wasn't looking behind me. No, we, we, when we go through, I think what happens is when we're preparing the final version of the warrant with the budget in it, we're starting to scrub each and every one of those individual numbers, there will be things that will come up in our conversation. It's always better to have a budget that's in the black, because you can always take that money and put it in snow and ice and call it a balanced budget, and you've, you've got, you've gone to town meeting with revenue balancing expenditures. It's always nice to have that cushion, because there are things that come up at the last minute. It's not unusual for Maya to come in very late with their premium. It's not unusual for us to get a school bus contract number very late. Marfaq Aggie can come in very late. So I like to have that ahead of us. Right now, I don't. So now I'm, I'm in the red, not by very much. I don't lose sleep over five-digit numbers in the red, because there's plenty of tiki-tacky things you can do to get past five digits. Start again into six digits, it gets a little bit more difficult, depending how deep we go into six digits, it may not even be possible, but the good news is that is probably the biggest unknown, right? So as we're heading into the process, we have an estimate for health insurance, we have a target for property and casualty insurance, we have a retirement number that we can't move, and we have, frankly, this year, very large increases to all of our education accounts. So just about all the energy that we can put into this budget in terms of growth is going to Blackstone Valley Tech, Douglas Public Schools, and the school bus contract. That's where almost all of the new revenues are going. So that's where I am presently. Because we do this forecast spreadsheet, and we have everything very formally reduced to really robust estimates, I could at any given time press the print button and you would have a balanced budget, just because that's where we are with the spreadsheet. But if the case, you're curious, you know, personnel's gonna go up, maybe just right around 2%, because that's the COLA. Expenses are gonna come in actually flat or a little bit in the negative on the town side. Everything else is gonna go towards the schools. I am cautiously optimistic that our new growth figure for the fiscal '26 budget will be very conservative, in that I, there's things in the pipeline that I'm quite certain will happen that will make our actual new growth number higher, but we won't know until December. So we won't speculate, we won't put that in the budget. That would just simply be good news that we deal with. Other than that, I don't know what else to say about it. I think it's mostly what I've covered with...
Yeah.
With FinCom.
Just a question, the E% delta, is any explanation, not from BBT on that, why it's such a high delta?
All right, so there's a few moving parts with his budget. All right, so there's a few moving parts with his budget. The per student assessment has climbed from 18,000 to a little over 20,000. So even communities around us that have fewer students going to BBT next year, their assessment went up, because the, basically, the tuition cost for students, for lack of a better term, has gone up fairly substantially. But that doesn't explain all of our delta. So we actually have a higher student population at BBT than we had the year before. Did it go up by that much?
Yeah, no, that helps explain it a little bit.
His costs, I mean, he likes to crow about the costs he's controlling. I'll give him credit, his health insurance bill's going up 4.5%, which is an admirable number, given how he plays it. I don't think that he's inefficient around energy in the building. I think he's got arrangements in place through the town of Upton or through his own contracts. So what you're looking at there is primarily personnel-driven. I'm going to guess his budget's even more personnel-heavy than ours, Douglas Public Schools. So we're about 80% personnel, he's probably closer to 85, 86% personnel, so.
Thanks.
If a certain person in Washington were in charge of cutting the staff there, I can imagine where he might go first, because I don't know that, I mean, a school system needs a public relations communications function. They've always felt like they want that to produce all the glossy stuff. You know, I don't think we need it, but it doesn't save you enough to really move the needle.
Well, puts money in their pocket, right? PR is talking to eight grand, isn't it?
Yeah.
Gene, you slaked you.
Yeah, genisms.
I will invite you to the, BBT is going to be attending the finance committee on March 11th, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So if you want to attend that meeting, you can have all those questions answered.
For sure.
Norfolk Aggie, we will reach out.
I don't have a number yet.
Right. That is a big, I mean, that's a high tuition cost as well. It depends on the number of students that attend, and the transportation's directly related to the number of students. But that's what happens at this time of year. You're waiting for those big numbers to come in to see where everything else shakes out.
All right. Where's the board? Nope. All right, we put the feelers out for any department head that wanted to come forward, and it hadn't really occurred, other than through the police, but they're still welcome as we have our little role in the budget process. So, all right, well, thank you.
I do think when things calm down, because right now it's very busy, but when things calm down, it might be good to hear from Highway. He's got a lot of issues that are directly in the select board's sweet spot, so we should get Adam for sure. But we'll give the guy a chance to catch some shut eye.
He drove by my house the other day, he looked exhausted.
The weather's been brutal.
Yeah, it was a.
How many hours are there in a week?
Anyway, all right, so onward with the budget. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Gene.
I'll see you a little later tonight.
Yep.
Oh, we're not done? Oh, yeah, we can stand for exec?
Oh, boy.
All right. Charter discussion, Les, you wanted this on the agenda.
Yeah, so we have a new government affairs person from Charter. Would it be possible of inviting them to a meeting or send a letter to them to see what they can do around discounts for savings for seniors and veterans in the community on their cable bill? It doesn't look like their infrastructure has been improved in decades or 46 years. It would be worthwhile to kind of reach out to them.
Oh, Pat?
That's Pat.
Hello.
Evening.
So I did get a heads up on this, and so when we just negotiated, last year, we negotiated our new tenure license, and Charter informed us that they no longer do seniors, senior discounts. So we had them on the last license, they pretty much outright refused this license. It was brought up at, if anyone wants to look at it, the 12th. We had a meeting with Charter on December 9th of '22, and all those are available on the cable page as well of the website, town website. But, yeah, we asked them point-blank, they said they won't do it anymore. And I have seen some publications saying the exact same thing. I saw other towns, I looked at some other meeting minutes from other cable committees, and they're all saying the same thing. They were told point-blank that they don't do senior discounts as a, you know, as a part of the new licensers, new licenses. Now, I did find some information, there is a federal program called Lifeline. I don't know if people are aware of this, but it has nothing to do with TV, but it can help with internet and phone. And what it does, it provides low-income households with a monthly discount. I'm not sure how that, how they provide that discount, if it's, you know, they get money specifically for that or somehow, but there is that federal program as well as Charter does. They do advertise an internet assist program for low-income. And I did, I added links, so if anyone goes to the Douglas Cable page on the town website, there's a new section called Helpful Links, and I added links to these programs that allow people to look at the information and see if they're qualified, and then there's, there's help actually, you know, applying for these programs. But unfortunately, I don't, I mean, I don't know if you still want to ask Charter, but I've seen nothing but no on that for pretty much everywhere. And they told us point-blank, but it is a new person.
No.
But I think, I think that they're not offering that, you know, across the board.
No, we're good. I think having these links posted and looking into this would be an avenue to look into. So I'll take that item, look into this. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Pat.
No problem.
Item 13, the review of the warrant articles. Bob and Eric have been waiting patiently. I know he wants to come talk to us. What do we have other than this right now in the queue? No, no, his stuff's here. I think he might have went to the restroom.
Okay. I did want to vote the topic that he's got, so that it's not a surprise to anyone, again, in the interest of transparency.
There he is.
Bob?
Bob?
You have a character limit to your comments, Mr. Manerick. 200 characters or less?
200. Starting at 150.
Is there a deductible?
20 sent a text, she miscounted the, she wanted to make an amendment.
Oh.
Did you give your phone to you?
No.
Okay. I'll wait for the phone.
Well, Bob's going to talk, so this might be good for me to run.
Go get the phone.
I'll be quick.
Thank you for waiting, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Called you earlier.
The Cubes of Gilboa has been entertaining a couple of tenants. One tenant is very interested in acquiring the neighboring adjacent 17-point, 17, let's say about 17-acre site, Douglas Own Land in Oxbridge. The reason I'm before you tonight is to see if we can put it on the town warrant, to have the voters vote to put it in your possession for disposal, which is the proper procedure.
So this is town-owned property in another town?
Town-owned land that we recently found out we owned. We owned it since 1951 and 1961. It's been on the books in Oxbridge under a private party, not us. There's no deed to prove they own the property. Two different title searches, one by our town representatives and one by CRG's title examiners, both determined that that property is, in fact, the town of Douglas. When peace was given to us in 1951, that's the Murphy property, which is the northernmost property, and it overlapped Douglas and Oxbridge. And then south of that is the Setti Aldridge Beach, which, again, is partially in Douglas, mostly in Oxbridge. Both those parties in '51 and '61 donated that land to the town, so it's always been in the town's possession. We just discovered it through these title searches when we acquired the, sold the land to the warehouses. Now, there's one tenant interested in occupying the entire building, and they're having a good interest in acquiring that property for additional truck parking.
Bob, do you know the purpose for which the donations were made? Did they say what they gave?
I think back then is that's when the town was going to have the town dump in that area. Buff Tarian would know the answer to that, and I can't find those drawings. But there was two separate deeds, the Murphy deed and the Setti Aldridge deed donated that land to the town of Douglas, even though most of it is in Oxbridge.
Yeah, I've got the deeds back in our office. I think that may have been the purpose for the donation, but the deed did not specify that purpose. So there's a process that we have to follow here, where the select board would say it's not needed for municipal purposes, and then we would go out and get an appraisal. So I've already spoken to the appraiser that we have actually used. This is a tricky one. It's not unusual for land in an industrial setting that is landlocked, has a tremendous amount of value to the butter, and virtually no value.
To anyone.
To anyone else. So that throws a monkey wrench in this sort of, I don't know, childish preoccupation with bidding competition on the part of the state. I said it, not you. Because we force us through this form of process that actually doesn't yield the highest value for the town. The town would be best served negotiating directly with people who want to buy it as butters. So the way out suggested by the appraiser is, well, I could do a theoretical appraisal as if the land were not landlocked and had access to a roadway. But help me out, go back and look at the deeds and see if there's actually an easement, because that will make it not so hypothetical anymore, and it will pass muster with the inspector general's office. Well, lo and behold, there is an easement on this property. The Aldridge donation specified that the town would be able to pass a repass over the Bosma property, which means northeast me. But, so we actually have access through an easement, and it wasn't specified or tied to a specific location. We could pass a repass over their entire lot at will, which is kind of kooky, but that's the way things were done back in the day. They thought you would know that there was a road behind the ninth hole, because that's been, that's been a golf course for a really, really, really long time. In the 50s, it was a golf course. But now a lot of that's wiped out with the developments that's there, really, since there's no meets and bounds set out for the easements, the whole property. So that's going to be good for us. That's one of my cautiously optimistic offsets for future budgets. But I think making a good faith effort towards bringing this to a close is what any potential tenant is looking for us to make that commitment.
Where land needs work, work.
No, it's the same, same mechanism.
So where this property is actually in Oxbridge, owned by the town of Douglas, our only benefit is the sale price.
Is the sale price. We're going to get nothing else.
I assume Oxbridge hasn't been taxing Douglas or?
Correct. They tried.
And we try to tax them, too. It's silly.
I think that whole line was.
We save the postage, I think. We don't send the bill.
Yeah, and the line did move, but it did not affect these two properties.
So this would help on one of our next potential major?
It would get us a tenant.
The revenue, the revenue from the sale of this, just go back into economic development?
General fund.
To what?
General fund.
General fund?
And we're talking market value, I would hope.
That's what I mean. So now I think you're going to see a more robust value.
Because you have access.
As the floor price, because you can say you have access, it's 17 acres and has access to the road.
And this is more of a want from the tenant, too, so there.
That might be good, but is it bad in the sense that it's an outlet for trucks to hit, bypass Gilboa?
So if they buy, so if they end up buying it, they're not going to use the easement, right? It's going to be connected to the rest of their property at Cubes.
That perimeter access road, the truck parking will be right off that road. Well, we had the rock wash out.
Yeah.
The road washed out, that's where the truck parking will be.
So the land would be used for truck storage?
Truck storage, yes.
The flat part.
Yeah.
Not the hole in the ground.
Does that give us?
Nice hole?
Doesn't that give us the excise revenue from the trucks that will be parked?
There'll be an Oxbridge.
There'll be an Oxbridge.
And those trucks will be in transit anyways.
Correct.
We won't be exercising that excise tax option.
Yeah, all these big companies are, they use a portioned tax.
Yeah, but when we get, there's got to be some machinery that can excise out of Douglas, being that's where the address is.
I think the key here is getting this tenant, because what they might do inside the building makes excise tax look like a silly conversation.
It's more taxable.
For some income of racking or whatever they're going to do.
Yeah, there's some racking's more expensive than others.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Types of racking.
Types of racking. Things that the racking does.
So this makes sense to keep this discussion going.
We need a vote tonight, or?
No, I just think this was notice.
Just notice.
When we, when we bring this to you, it's going to be kind of fast-paced.
Go.
Now, the warrant closes on March 18th, so what do you need from me prior to that?
It was to get the deed to Attorney Bowen, for sure.
Is there an appraisal of what's going to be done, or do we need to?
So I'm going to pull the trigger on that when I actually get some conversation with the tenant, which.
But it's not, yeah.
I thought it was going to be today, but it wasn't.
Understandable.
Because otherwise, we're.
The deed.
Yeah.
Yeah. You don't have to pull it.
Would that be for the board to dispense of land, or would this be the actual? Okay. Yeah, so we're on track. We've actually a little ahead of the game from where we have been with some other things.
We don't have a bucket to pour water in for finance. We have to go to the FinCom for reserve fund transfer, the appraisal.
Mr. Musk holding up any of our potential grant requests in Washington?
Well, you know, I wish that you would ask that question when the schools were here, because I think it's a salient issue for them, not for us. We don't have any.
Yeah, we have to get some federal dollars.
Well, no, it's good. We're closing out our existing grant, and all the ARP is done, so we don't have a big federal exposure right now.
Anything exposure, that's good.
You do it the fire department, actually. But I don't think the fire department grant's going to be cheap.
Mine is not wasteful or fraudulent, it's probably not getting held up.
The, there are no meeting minutes, but to keep you, Bob, here, just very quickly, a municipal light plant discussion. There's nothing in our packets, per se, but I do want to keep this discussion going. Any movement on any of it since the last time we met?
Since two weeks ago, no.
Not, not really. Matt got me involved because of the Pine Project. There's an opportunity there to kind of fold everything together.
We had a meeting today that might be, I think it's a positive development, but it's another layer of complexity to, because it's a renewable energy. it's another layer of complexity to, it's a renewable energy concept that may have to use the, the old wastewater treatment plant that's behind Gilboa. Most people aren't aware, but when Guilford's of Maine was running the place, they had a very significant wastewater treatment plant out behind with a Niptys permit with a 1.2 million gallon discharge. The Niptys permit has expired, but all the equipment is still there. It's all made out of stainless steel, so it's, it's forever stuff, and it wasn't taken down. That would affect some of the power connections that would occur in that neighborhood if we can move that project forward. So it's on a much smaller scale, it's tiny compared to what we're talking about needing, but it's the use of the space. So we are, we are continuing to do a lot of work on this, just don't have much to report by way of progress.
You know, Matt, it's online.
Matt?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just kind of went through the warrant item. Just wanted to give you guys a small preview of what I've got for the warrant, if that's okay.
Please.
I've got, I've got 11 potential placeholders for articles, one being the Stonewater Bylaw, as you know. Three potential zoning bylaw amendments, including ADU comments, if we get those back from the Attorney General based on our full town meeting. I've also got, oh geez, three street acceptances, hoping that all the legal documents are reviewed in time for the warrant to close, and that all the work is done prior to, we'll talk about those at our next meeting. And a couple of requests from Conservation Commission, one is for signs budget, and I have a wild card discussion, discuss with you guys at your next meeting, but I've got 11 warrant articles just to give you guys the heads up.
All right, just be mindful of our deadline, that.
Yes, sir.
All right. And I would say if we're not ready to go, patience tends to pay great dividends, so if 11 becomes six, that's okay with me.
Yeah. Some might end up being on the fall, sir. One's a Mass Trails grant that wouldn't be, the application isn't until January, so that might be a article for the fall, so maybe that's one that gets pushed off already.
Is that from the state where they want to stripe our trails?
Yeah, this, this Trails grant would probably be the newly acquired property off of Conservation Drive.
Okay.
We've got over 100 acres up there, and we could use a trail network up there with some signage and some parking. Might be a good opportunity to go for that, so.
Cool. All right. Very good, but we'll see you in the next meeting then.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Very good. All right, let's move this along. We still have a fairly robust executive session. Absent, without Mike, the goal's discussion, we can push off a little bit unless the board wants to. I thought today's meeting.
I updated the memo, but I only got it to you today, so.
Yeah. I do think the presentation from Mr. Popka was particularly helpful. So Fire Department?
So here's, so I'm glad Rich is here, because I, this is a transparency kind of conundrum. So Labor Council has advised that we would discuss the MOU in executive session for the benefit of the board and for all the parties involved to be able to have a conversation protected by some of the executive session exemptions. But the actual existence of an MOU, once it's voted by the board, or perhaps it should be voted in open session, our bylaws require us to post labor agreements in a public manner. So this is why I asked Lisa to put a book on the opening executive. I knew we would use the executive, but I wasn't sure if you want to have a placeholder here, perhaps to do executive session, then come out and announce any result?
You go do it at a subsequent meeting.
If I could do it at a subsequent meeting, it's fine.
Yeah.
So why don't we do that? We'll just strike that.
All right. Do you report, Matt?
Everything I've been working on has already been discussed here tonight. It's been a busy agenda, I've been busy, but I don't want to add anything at this point. I hate to do this, but contradict myself 10 seconds after I said it. Briefly, you have notice of another $100,000 drawdown in deficit spending in snow and ice. Brings your total to 175,000. The other thing that we're, we're working on, because it's not going to, this meeting isn't going to move the needle, but it's reminding the public of their obligations to take care of their sidewalks, if they have sidewalks in front of their property. That is a town bylaw, that is their responsibility. We make every effort that we can, and we have the equipment to do it, but ultimately it is residents' responsibility if they have that. The other thing is, it is not okay to push your snow out into the street, as much as it might seem like the most convenient thing to do, especially this last storm was wicked.
Brutal.
And very understandable that people just wanted to be done with the work, but there actually is a bylaw in Douglas that makes it unlawful for people to take the snow from the yard and push it into the street. So just to, we're all dealing with the same thing. It is a challenging situation to have a storm that starts off with snow, goes to rain, to ice, back to snow again. It's really difficult. And I think Highway guys have been working really hard and have done a very fine job of keeping the streets open, but to do all of that and then start on the sidewalks, just a lot of work. And the flash freeze that came was, was quick and has not broken, and we're just going to hope that Mother Nature helps us out. Just a quick shout-out to those folks, if you're a business downtown or you have residential sidewalks in front of your house, you have the responsibility to clear them off.
Fair enough.
And that's that.
In the interest of honesty and transparency, I will say my shoe got stuck and I turned my snow blower and some snow went in the street.
Sticky foot, well, that's tough.
Wind took it.
You know, it happens, and I, it was.
We'll deliver you back to snow.
Not on purpose. All right. Let's go to executive session.
Yep. I'll make a motion to go to executive session for Fire Department member MOU A, B, potential litigation, MSHG, C, interest in real property, Shore Road, reconvene to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Made by Ross, seconded by Les, roll call vote.
Smith, I.
Stephen's eye. Stephen's eye.
Ronan, I. Good meeting. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.